Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome the public at large to our November twenty second, two thousand and twenty one, Lackawanna City Council caucus as well as welcoming members of department heads. Items, the roll call is hearing from citizens and minutes approval or as well as departmental reports. Our administrative, we could take those in due course during the regular council meeting. Item number six from Councilman Ingram requesting Martin Luther King Day Parade, January seventeenth, to be held at sixty-six Wasan Mount Olive Baptist Church. Councilman, this is your request. Are you asking for a street block offer or something more specific?
No, we get action. It's just a little parade from the Friendship House to to Mount Olive Church. You know what I'm saying? It should, one side of the road should be all right. We now have police escort. Weather permitting, we know how the weather can play a major role into that. We will be, and further information concerning Martin Luther King. We will be having a Martin Luther King celebration at Mount Olive, Mount Olive Church. And I think the parade would be one of the greatest highlights of it. It would be honored and a great night. We were supposed to have it a couple of years ago, but due to the weather was with extreme cold, this would be the first parade we ever had.
Yeah, well, you're always run an exceptional celebration for the Martin Luther King Celebration Day. Anyone have any questions or issues to bring up on that item?
I'll just bring up that we actually are requesting police. I mean, I don't think we're calling for overtime, but if we are me having people marching from across the the street on Ridge Road, our busiest street, to Mount Olive, then we will have to have the police block off the road so we can cross safely and not get run over, just saying.
That's like, you guys did a police escort.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good. Okay, anyone else? Thank you. Right, moving on to item number seven from Carolina City Controller. Request an ordinance to close out Galante Park Improving Project, return funds to the general fund. Project is now complete and the city has been reimbursed through the state grant. Anyone have any questions or issues on that?
Been a while, took about four years. But finally, it's done. These projects take time, time to get our money back.
COVID interfered too, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's been.
I always say that there's a timeframe for government services for local government. It's almost always immediate if possible. You know, if we can send a DPW crew and fix a pothole, we send them in as fast as possible. We try to get it within that same day or two. Hopefully not outside of a week. County during the snowstorm of two thousand and fourteen, there was some damage on North Street off of Abbott Road. It took them nine months to repair it, but they got done. State, one to two years is my timeframe and federal. I don't know what they do for local government at all, but it's typically around five to ten years. So but you're right, COVID did set this one back, but this was a state funded project.
Councilman Semanski, thank you for your insight on that. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right, item number seven A is the ordinance to that request. Item number eight again from Carolina City Controller. Quest Council approved the ordinance approving additional interfund advance between general fund and capital fund for the Cleveland Avenue paving project. The capital fund will repay the advance through the CDBG reimbursement. Anyone have anything on that? Moving to item number nine, Director of Recreation, Director Laxo is present. Request City Council approve use of senior center, the senior center by New York State State Senator Tim Kennedy's team regarding vaccinations. Anyone have any questions or comments on that? Item number ten, request from Mr. DeSantis, Commissioner DeSantis regarding the purchase of a used two thousand and nineteen freightliner dump truck for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the the town of Hornellsville. Anyone have any questions or comments on that?
I love Hornellsville. They save us a lot of money. We get great vehicles out of them.
They don't keep their their machines very long, so we get the better.
Two years in Lackawanna buys them, they great deals, man. Then we'll drive for twelve.
Anyone else? Business registrations, Richard Richardson, DBA H Y H Tech, IT Service, Web Design, Computer Repair, two zero six Royal and Avenue has the appropriate approvals. Anyone have any comments on that? Okay, the next item is a waiver of the rules. There's been some general discussion and searching around. Apparently, this is a twofold request. First of all, it's just come to light recently. There's been, there is a request on the table for the city to purchase a one million, two hundred thousand dollar ladder truck for the Lackawanna Fire Department, which apparently is in great need. And secondly, is a request and notification from Harris Beach or bonding attorneys to take appropriate steps so that we can ensure a better interest rate and move on the bonding so that we could pay for the truck, for this particular truck. As I've made my position very clear in the past, oftentimes, we as a city council don't see these large ticket items until they appear on the agenda two or three days before the actual meeting. And in all fairness to the city council, but for Carolyn Nicometto's efforts in getting all of this together and Rick Judah, I had no idea that the bonding issue pertained to the purchase of a one million, one hundred thousand dollar fire truck. I thought the bonding issue was relative to the two hundred and twenty thousand dollar dump truck purchase. So seeing all this in front of me, I have no idea or had no idea that we're being requested at all to purchase a fire truck. And then it's going to require bonding to do that, or suggested that the bonding be the appropriate avenue, more fiscally responsible avenue to make such a purchase. But if I'm mistaken, no one contacted this council, giving us a heads up that there was a proposal. The fire department is requesting a one million, two hundred thousand dollar new vehicle. I'm assuming it's new. Secondly, in speaking with the mayor this afternoon on this very topic, there are two additional money items that accompany this one million, two hundred thousand dollar truck. First of all, fire truck, fire station number three on South Park where I've been, it was been indicated that this truck is destined to be parked. The entry door is too small for it, so that has to be modified to the cost of forty thousand dollars before that truck could be stored on the South Park. I believe that Station House number three, it can either be stored, I think, through Councilman Moretti's input, having been a fireman, that it might be able to be stored at Firehouse, as far as Station Number Two on Abbott Road or Fire Station Number One in the first ward on Ridge Road. And then finally, there's a decommissioned or a fire pumper that's out of commission in need of repair, and that's another forty thousand dollar request that's out there. Now, we're looking at one million, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in monies to be expended by this council when we have not been given the privilege or the courtesy of saying, look, this is coming down the pike. Would you consider this a purchase for the city? Don't come to me on three days before the the vote has to be passed and say, look, this is what we're trying to do. I don't think that's appropriate. And I think a memo should go out from this council to all department heads requesting and demanding that especially these ticket, the large ticket items, we be given substantial notice in advance so that we can consider the ramifications of how it's paid for, where it's coming from, is it new, is it old, what are its needs? Are we in jeopardy without one? We weren't afforded any of that. And to come at the eleventh hour, I think, at least for my purposes, I can't in good conscience, both for the, this two-pronged approach, changing the bonding status. I don't, I don't know if I'm using the correct terms. Modifying our bonding status and okaying the purchase of a one million, two hundred thousand dollar vehicle with two days notice. That's my thing. I don't know how everyone else feels about it.
I would like to hear from the fire chief. I like to hear specifically the conditions of the current fleet. Also, where are they getting the estimates for the restructuring of Firehouse Three? It's in, by the way, it's forty thousand now, and with inflation happening, it might be fifty thousand next year. But where are they getting that cost, that quarter from as well? So I'm not comfortable moving forward right now. I'd like to have some deeper dialogue with the folks that are trying to allow us to make this purchase, but two point two five million dollars is not something we should weigh the rules on, in my opinion.
Thank you, Councilman Semanski. Anyone else have any position on this, any questions?
Just be advised, this, this, this resolution or these ordinances ended up on my desk this morning. It's the first I'd seen him as well. So you got him when I got him. I don't think in talking to different people, I think that one point two million is what they want set aside for financing a fire truck. It's not for the specific fire truck. It hasn't gone out to bid or anything. So they don't really know how much it costs because there hasn't been any bid process with it. I think they're trying to plan ahead so that they could then make the process move forward and know that the monies are going to be there, whatever those monies are. It was my understanding, and again, just today, that the one point two is a maximum amount. No one's saying it's going to cost that for a new ladder truck. But again, it hasn't gone out to bid. Any building repairs haven't gone out to bid, so I don't know where these numbers are coming from. But we've got two items on there, two separate items. The one is obviously the fire truck for one point two million, and then you've got, you've got the refunding and the bond ordinance for two point two five million. They're two different, they're two different ordinances. So if you don't want to act on one, obviously, it's not waiving the rules because, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's not tabling it because it's really not on the on the agenda. However, there's, there's two pieces to this, so I don't know if you don't want to entertain either one, or if you want to entertain just just the the refunding bond ordinance for the city that's supposed to save some interest, I guess. Just keep in mind, there are two, there are two items that have been asked to be looked at and action taken on, so.
Yeah, and my point is, don't we have to okay the purchase in the first place before we start looking for the funding and condition it on the funding instead of putting the cart before the horse, changing our bonding? I mean, I understand changing our bonding if it saves us money, and I believe Carolyn Nicometto, our controller, has done a wonderful job in that respect. And maybe we should go forward if that's the recommendation on that portion of those two ordinances or resolutions, whichever they are. But again, it still begs the question, these, we're making these, we're entertaining these two items of legislation. We haven't even okayed the purchase of a new truck yet. So I agree. Yeah, the whole thing doesn't, procedurally, doesn't make sense to me.
So we wait, if we wait, would that give us enough time to decide? Carolyn can give us all the information, and we'll be able to look at it by the next council meeting.
You would have to talk to Annette and to Jim Fino about the fire truck. That's it was, it was advised to roll everything together to do the refinancing and the fire truck at the same time. Again, I'm comfortable with whatever you want to do. If you want to take the time and have a discussion with Annette and Jim Fino, that's, that's perfect.
Well, I think just out of common courtesy, we should have been given notice about this instead of learning about this Thursday or even today, when the resolutions came from Harris Beach. I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but a one million, two hundred thousand dollar possibility plus another eighty thousand on on related items without ever having talked to the city council, any member of the city council, I think is inappropriate. That's, and I know it's not your fault, Carolyn. You're stuck in the middle. We as a legislative body have to pass the the resolution to purchase the item, and we were never even asked or had the courtesy of being informed that this was on the table.
I would have preferred to have this separate so that the bond item was different from the fire truck item. Because with my conversation with the controller this morning, with the rates we were discussing and the plan that we were looking at, good quality, healthy savings by doing this, but we, everything seems to be combined. And none of us are comfortable with the second part. I don't think many of us went out of prime of the first part, but right now.
They're two separate, they're two separate ordinances. They're not combined.
Right, but the intent is the combination of the two. Handling the bonding matters so that facilitates the purchase of the fire truck, but we can, I think, possibly today, if you're comfortable with maybe entertaining, first of all, waiving the rules and entertaining item A under that heading, the refunding bond ordinance of City Lackawanna. Is that, would that accomplish a savings, Carolyn?
A hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars, the present value of a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars to refinance.
We could act on that today and then table or not act on the purchase of the or allocation of the monies for the, for the new fire truck until we're, we're comfortable with that, right?
You could do that. Yep.
Okay, then maybe that's, that's the way to go, to save the city money. Again, Carolyn, thank you. Well, we could entertain item number lettered A under the waiver of the rules, but item number B, I think we need more information. And I think a memo should go out from us to all the department is from now on, that we're not going to entertain this at the last minute. Come and see us in advance so that we know what we're doing, and we're not scrambling at the last minute trying to piece all these puzzles together.
I know, I will say this. Now, regarding what you just said there, Council President, I agree. There are sometimes things that are just on, what does it say, unfortunate that the timing is bad. And say something gets, arrives on a Friday after clock in. The fire truck was foreseeable, but if we're talking timeliness to save the city a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars, I think it would be best if we move on this one. And how, how I understand it, that these conversations were coming in from our bond council after clock in. So I'm okay with that part, but the fire truck part was obviously, there was deeper dialogue behind, not, not in our chambers. So I think that that should have been brought to us first because that was foreseeable. The other stuff, you know, our controller has been working pretty hard trying to get this, the best deal for the city. So I understand what you're saying, though. We don't want, you know, the surprises like the fire truck are not welcomed, but there are unexpected surprises such as what's wrong, Kevin?
Not that I'm despite my tongue over here, because, you know, this isn't a first time this stuff happens. It happens all the time. And, you know, we get a contract, you know, two days before we're supposed to approve it. Or, you know, big ticket item like this should have been in the budget, it should have been in last year's budget if we're going to buy a ladder truck or something, you know. But I don't know if the savings, both bonds are going to be tied together. I don't know. It sounds that way, but we can do the one and then pay, you know, table the other one or whatever.
We just want to bring it off the table.
Yeah, right. All right, thanks.
All right, anyone else on that issue?
Yeah, can you hear me, Fred?
Yes.
Yeah, just, just ahead. I was not, and I'm not throwing anyone under the bus. I know Jim and Carolyn and the mayor have been talking about this for for a little bit now. I did not know this was going to be on the agenda today. And again, I'm not, this process has been going on, so as it's been going on, Jim has been telling me a little bit, the mayor, Carolyn. We've all been kind of talking on and off a little bit about it. I just didn't know it was going to be, you know, brought this morning. With that being said, the forty thousand, if you have questions about the forty thousand for house three, the way the, the way the trucks are made now, they're just made larger. We could make it from what Jim told me a couple of weeks ago when he was talking to me about it. We could ask for a specific truck to fit house three. But that's probably going to cost more money than the forty thousand to fix doors to fit the truck in now. So it actually, we're sent to actually fix the door of the, of the, of the firehouse.
Yeah, and we are, we're aware that that may need to be done. Our point is simply, nobody told us. Nobody asked us, nobody informed us.
Understood, understood.
I was also saying that the last time we bought a fire truck, it was incredibly close that it didn't fit before. So they do make them sure larger now, but it, Dean, perhaps you can correct us if I'm wrong, but that thing barely cleared like a few inches the last time we bought it. And so, but my question is this, if you know it costs forty thousand dollars and you know this has been in the works for a while, why is this the first we've heard of it? And I'm not trying to, I'm not throwing anyone under the bus. It's just that if you have quotes for prices to re, redesign our firehouses, then this has been a much longer dialogue than than the council's been made aware of.
Yeah, the first, the first I heard of the doorway was probably ten to fourteen days ago. Again, I, this was going to be put on the agenda today. I had no idea, none whatsoever.
My, gentlemen, my understanding was this conversation regarding the fire truck and the related items, the repair of the down truck, decommissioned truck and the front entrance to Fire Station Number Three, that those discussions started back in June. So I mean, we're, we're heading towards the end of November, and this is, and to find this out on a Thursday or Friday or Monday, when the paperwork finally came through, through from our bond attorneys, it's like.
No, I, I, I'm not going to disagree with you guys. I'm just, I've been here only for two years, but this is the way it's always been, you know, for the last two years, this is the way it seems like so it's been done. I have absolutely no problem getting everything, moving forward, getting everything on paper and coming to you guys two weeks before. I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Dean, you're trying to say something?
Yeah, in the future, my thought is, is that if we're going to be purchasing something as large as that, no matter what department it is, that, that, that department head should probably come and visit with each one of us and explain what he's doing and, and, you know, asking for his our support in what he's trying to do. Now, as far as Firehouse Three goes, you're mentioning it about expanding the door. It's always been a problem since I've been on the firehouse that it was too narrow. We've had mirrors knocked off. We've scraped the side of the the doorway and stuff, so it is a problem. The ladder truck that we, the last ladder truck we purchased was probably over ten years ago. That ladder truck had a problem, and I think, I personally think the problem that it had was because of poor maintenance. It not going in for its regular maintenance and checking up on it, oils and stuff like that. Now, this new fire truck, the fact that one that we have right now, I don't know where they purchased it from. There's like a three inch clearing on the back wall at house, house two. That's where the ladder truck stays. Okay, it doesn't come to house three and we don't pull it in there. Okay, you never, it's always, house three, it's got two, it has the main fire truck and a backup fire truck for second, second calls. House one has a pumper and they put in there because there's enough room. So, but I understand the widening of the door, but again, Jim, I haven't, he has spoken to me about this at all. I heard rumors about it just recently. And I think that we need to be informed, and he should have came to one of, each one of us.
That's not, guys, that's on me. All right.
Why?
Jim, Jim's doing what he can to make the fire, the fire department better. He came to me, oh, told me. I just didn't know it was coming today, guys. I just, that's the part I didn't know this was on the agenda today.
Well, John, our point is, we didn't know it was coming either. And what we're saying is that, that, that's not, that's a poorer way to do business.
Right, so we're going to make sure, I'll make sure I talk to Jim, I talk to Mark.
Well, it's, it's, it's not, okay, I think enough's been said about this.
I agree.
I think we, everybody knows where we're coming from.
There is one more point I have to bring up there.
You know.
I would just like to ask, do we have to go out to bid for this since it's, you know, over a million dollars? I mean, we're gonna just give it to one company? Is, are there specs we're supposed to follow? Is there something, Dean, that, you know, New York State mandates that we have a certain fire truck pumper company, or I don't know how the procurement comes if we go out to bid. It's been a while for me.
It the last one was out for bid.
It has to go out for bid. You have to bid it out, period. There's no, no way around it. We can't just go, I want that fire truck now. We have to go out for bid.
And the only, only difference is, is that what has happened in the past is they order nothing on it. Okay, so we would take all our old equipment and put it on. So in the future, what we do is we get them fully loaded with brand new jaws and all the updated equipment that we can use to, for, for the safety, so.
And for all the people out there following, Firehouse One is in the first ward. Firehouse Two is on Abbott Road. And Firehouse Three is on South Park, and Jeff, your phone's buzzing, so.
Yeah, whose phone keeps buzzing?
Our city clerks, but he's got it under control.
Okay.
All right, Councilman Semanski, thank you very much. Councilman Moretti, you too. Thank you for clarifying. Carolyn Nicometto, City Controller, thank you for your efforts on that. Any other, anything else on that issue?
To be clear, we're going to waive the rules for A but not B, correct?
Yes.
All right, we're going to save the city a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars.
Anything else, gentlemen and ladies, before we begin? If not, I believe it's seven o'clock. It's actually after, so I will formally call the Lackawanna City Council November twenty second, two thousand and twenty one meeting to order, and I would ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance.
One nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Absolutely. Just a reminder to all, this meeting is being recorded. Roll call, Council Ingram.
Here.
Semanski.
Here.
Moretti.
Here.
Surtik.
Here.
Moreno.
Here.
Department Head's Law.
Here.
Development.
Public Works. I'm sorry, that's on me. Director Stanton texted me today requesting he be excused for two reasons. One, he's not well, and secondly, he has nothing on the agenda, so I okayed it.
All right, Public Works.
He also has asked to be excused. He has some important family matter that he has to see to today, so I excuse him.
Public Safety.
Here.
Controller.
Here.
Recreation.
Here.
Public Information.
Here.
Hearings from citizens. We had not received any hearings from citizens by the Wednesday deadline. So that moves us to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November eighth, two thousand and twenty one, and the special meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one.
All right, I'll move that we approve the minutes of both November eighth and November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one meetings.
Second.
So I have a motion by Moreno, second by Semanski, to approve both the minutes for the regular meeting of November eighth and the special meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Ingram.
Yeah.
Semanski.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Curried five zero, departmental reports, one through five.
To receive and file departmental reports, one through five inclusive.
All righty, second.
Motion by Moreno, second by Moretti, to receive and file departmental reports, one through five. Ingram.
Yeah.
Demansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Curried five zero, communications from the council, number six, Councilmember Ingram requests the City Council approve a Martin Luther King Parade on January seventeenth, two thousand and Curried five zero, communications from the council, number six. Councilmember Ingram requests the city council to approve a Martin Luther King parade on January seventeenth, twenty twenty two. The parade will be part of the Martin Luther King celebration, which will be held at the Mount Olive Baptist Church, sixty six Wason Avenue. The parade will start at the former Friendship House site on Ridge Road, proceed to Wason Avenue and end at Mount Olive Baptist Church.
Moreno moves to approve request, refer to DPW Commissioner and Director of Public Safety. Um, there will probably be some police escort needed, and maybe the street needs to be closed off, and Councilman Ingram, maybe you need to communicate what time the parade will be and how long you think it might last.
Come, the parade will last no more than shit, no more than twenty five minutes, you know.
You need to let our our Director of Public Safety know that, so he knows how, what arrangements to make with the police department.
I'll get in touch with you when I get, um, tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Council, Councilman Ingram, are you seconding this?
Yes.
So I have a motion by Moreno, second by Ingram, to approve request, refer to DPW Commissioner and Director of Public Safety with specifics. Ingram.
Yeah.
Semansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surdeke.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Curried five zero, communications from Division Department Heads, number seven. City Controller requests the city council to approve the attached ordinance to close out the Galani Park Improvement Project and return the funds back to the general fund. The project is now complete and the city has been reimbursed by the state grant.
Moreno moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
A motion by Moreno, second by Ingram, to receive and file act on ordinance.
Ingram. Yes.
Semansky.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surdeke.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Curried five zero, the ordinance amending to two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two budget ordinance adopted May eighteenth, two thousand twenty one by refunding the general fund and closeout capital project for Galani Park improvements by increasing the budget code for transfer from other fund capital by one hundred and sixty eight thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars and forty nine cents, and increasing the city's fund balance by one hundred and sixty eight thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars and forty nine cents.
Motion to approve, Surdeke.
Second, Semansky.
A motion by Surdeke, second by Semansky, to adopt ordinance is written. Ingram.
Yes.
Semansky.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surdeke.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Curried five zero, number eight, City Controller requests the city council to approve the attached ordinance approving an additional interfund advance between the general fund and the capital fund to pay for the Cleveland Avenue paving project. The capital fund will repay the advance within the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two fiscal year when CDBG reimbursement is received.
Motion to receive and file act on ordinance.
Moreno seconds.
Motion by Semansky, second by Moreno, to receive and file act on ordinance. Ingram.
Yeah.
Semansky.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surdeke.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yeah.
Curried five zero, that ordinance amending to two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two budget ordinance adopted May eighteenth, two thousand twenty one by adding two hundred and forty four thousand one hundred and forty seven dollars to the budget code for transfer to other fund capital, appropriating two hundred and forty four thousand, one hundred and forty seven dollars of the city's fund balance, adding two hundred and forty four thousand, one hundred and forty seven dollars to the budget code for streets, and increasing the budget code for capital fund interfund transfers by two hundred and forty four thousand, one hundred and forty seven dollars.
Out the ordinance is written.
Moreno seconds.
Motion by Semansky, second by Moreno, to adopt ordinance is written. Ingram.
Yes.
Demansky.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surdeke.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Curried five zero, number nine, Director Recreation requests the city council to approve the use of the senior center by New York State, State Senator Tim Kennedy's team for a follow-up vaccination event on December eleventh, twenty twenty one, from eleven AM to one PM. This event would be for persons requiring their second dose of the COVID vaccine.
Moreno moves to approve request.
Motion by Moreno, second by Moretti, to approve request. Ingram.
Yeah.
Semansky.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surdeke.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Curried five zero, number ten, DPW Commissioner requests the city council approval purchase of a fully equipped two thousand nineteen Freightliner Dump Truck to be purchased from the town of Hornellsville for a total of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Moreno moves to approve request.
All righty, second.
Motion by Moreno, second by Moretti, to approve request. Ingram.
Yes.
Demansky.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surdeke.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Curried five zero, business registrations. Richard Richardson doing business as H Mike H Tech, which is IT services, web design and computer repair, two oh six Roland Avenue.
Moreno moves to approve business registration.
Second, Semansky.
A motion by Moreno, second by Semansky, to approve business registration. Ingram.
Yes.
Demansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surdeke.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Curried five zero, Mr. Council President.
Moreno moves to waive the rules.
Second, Semansky.
So I have a motion by Moreno, second by Semansky, to waive the rules. Ingram.
Yeah.
Semansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surdeke.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Curried five zero, we have a request from the city attorney uh, asking the city council to waive the rules and approve the attached two bond ordinances.
Moreno moves to receive and file act on ordinance A only.
Second, Semansky.
So we have a motion by Moreno, second by Semansky, to receive and file act on ordinance A. Ingram.
Yeah.
Semansky.
Yes.
We're ready.
Yes.
Surdeke.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
So ord- uh, ordinance A is a refunding bond ordinance of the City of Lackawanna, New York, authorizing the refunding of all or a portion of certain outstanding serial bonds of said city, stating the plan of refunding appropriating an amount not to exceed two million, two hundred and fifty thousand refunding bonds of said city, or so much thereof as may be necessary to finance said appropriation, and making certain determinations all relative thereto. A complete copy of this bond ordinance is on file in the city clerk's office.
Moreno moves to adopt bond ordinance is written.
Second, Semansky.
A motion by Moreno, second by Semansky, to adopt bond ordinance is written. Ingram.
Yeah.
Semansky.
Good job, Carolyn and Rick. Yes.
Yes.
Surdeke.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Curried five zero, um, we're not going to act on ordinance B, so Mr. Council President.
Are there any tables or, uh, old business items the council wishes to bring up at this time?
Yeah, I would like to bring up is that, uh, this past Saturday, uh, Senator Kennedy had a turkey giveaway and COVID shots, and, uh, it was amazingly attended. Uh, it was a really nice affair and, uh, and it was a nice affair. Senator Kennedy was, uh, you know, talked to everybody in the place, so.
Artist working man in politics, Senator Kennedy, saying every decade, man.
I I agree with you. Absolutely.
Councilman Moretti, if I could just follow up really quickly, I just wanted to point out that what was approved today for December eleventh, uh, it's a follow-up vaccination event for those individuals that received their first dose of the vaccine
at Senator Kennedy's event this past Saturday. It's not an open enrollment or anything.
It's strictly through the senator's office, just in case anyone out there is listening and looking for a vaccination, uh, location. Unless you were at the first event, this isn't the place to look for the second vaccination.
That's, that's pretty important to know.
Yeah, really. And he's been very, uh, uh, optimistic about our renaissance here in Lackawanna, and, uh, he's he's doing a fantastic job and he's very interested in our progress.
He's been a big part of it.
Yeah, he's been a great friend of Lackawanna.
Yes.
Anyone else? Councilman Ingram, you had something you wish to say?
No, I was going to talk about the event, but, um, Dean said it well. Kennedy did outstanding job and as Kane did outstanding job. And it was a great event for the City of Lackawanna and for the residents.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Ingram. Uh, any other table, their old business items, anyone wishes to discuss? If not, then Moreno moves to adjourn.
Uh, Mr. Council, Council President, uh, if I may have one minute, this is Chuck Clark.
Yes.
For those who are not aware, this afternoon, County Executive Polling Cars announced the implementation of a countywide mask mandate in all public buildings across the county. That's going to also affect Lackawanna City Hall. So this afternoon, uh, there's a message from the mayor on both the city Facebook page and the website, and there was an email to people who work in the city hall, uh, building and other city buildings that the mask mandate, uh, will go into effect at the county's insistence tomorrow, uh, Tuesday, the twenty third, and will stay in effect until such time that the county executive and the county health department, uh, issue a new order, but more than likely, um, based on a meeting today, um, that mandate will be in effect to the end of the year.
Uh, thank you, Chuck. Uh, great information, great heads up. Anyone else? I renew my motion to adjourn.
Ingram, second.
I have a motion by Moreno, second by Ingram, to adjourn the meeting. Ingram.
Yes.
Semansky.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surdeke.
Yeah.
Moreno.
Yes.
Curried five, uh, zero, uh, Mr. Council President, if you would, give me a call at, uh, conclusion. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you.